All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Lauren Bell. I am Dean of Academic Affairs and Professor of Political Science at Randolph-Macon College. It is my pleasure to welcome you all, at least virtually, to our Ashland Town Council Forum tonight. This is not how we would normally want to do this. Normally, we would love to be in the council chambers with an audience of residents from the town of Ashland. But desperate times, as they say, call for desperate measures. So here we are, virtually. I'm really pleased that all six of our candidates for town council are able to join us tonight. We'll hear from them in just a second. What we will do in order to get started, in just a minute, I'm going to draw names out of this very fancy cup that I have that will determine our order of opening statements. Each candidate will have up to three minutes to make an opening statement. After we conclude our opening statements, we'll move on to questions from members of the town. If you have a question and you're able to watch this in real time, you are welcome to email me at lbell@ramc.edu if you'd like to ask a question. Candidates, if you'd like to ask questions of each other, you can use the chat feature in Zoom if you'd like to do that. To send them ideally to me, or you could send them to the group, but I would ask you not to ask them yourselves. I will go ahead and ask them if we have time at the end. When we move to questions, each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond to each question. That will be true whether the question is asked of all candidates or only, you know, a few candidates or even a single candidate. When questions are asked only to a single candidate or a small number of candidates, only those candidates will answer the question. The idea there is to make sure we can get through as many questions as possible and give town residents the greatest sense of who all the candidates are. Once we've finished with questions, or when it gets to be 7:45, whichever comes first, we'll move on to closing statements. I'll go back to my handy closing statement drawing process and we'll draw an order for closing statements. And the candidates will have up to two minutes to make a closing statement before we end the evening. This is being recorded, so we'll be able to share this in a number of different social media forums or make this available for folks who'd like to see it. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and draw names. I'm not looking in it. So our first speaker will be Anita Barnhart. Our second speaker will be DA Wooten. Our third speaker will be Stephanie Hare. Our fourth speaker will be Kathy Abbott. Our fifth speaker will be David Goldstein, and our last speaker will be Steve Trevette. So I have put those in order here to keep track. Again, Anita, DA, Stephanie, Kathy, David, and Steve will go in that order. Each of you will have up to three minutes to make an opening statement, and I'll go ahead and invite Anita to go ahead and make her opening remarks. Anita, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Dr. Hello, I hope you can hear me. Thank you, Dr. Bell. I would like to begin this evening by not only thanking you, but the League of Women Voters and also everyone here at Town Hall for making this event happen. I know it has a lot of working parts, so I really appreciate that. I would like the voters of Ashland to know that I'm a longtime educator. I have been employed by Hanover County Public Schools for 30 years, and 23 of those years I spent working at Liberty Middle School and at Patrick Henry. So I've worked with many of the students and their families in and around the Ashland area. I think the skills that I've learned as an educator will serve me well as a town council member. For example, as a classroom teacher, as a coach, as a department chairperson, I had to be very organized and I had to work with people from different with different opinions, and we had to work together to figure out how to accomplish our goals. As an administrator, as an international backglow coordinator and advanced placement coordinator, I was responsible for creating budgets, and those budgets had to include a detailed spending plan. They also had to include a rainy day, rainy day fund, excuse me. In the same capacity, I was also responsible for creating long-range plans. And I truly understand that sometimes you have to go back to the drawing board to reprioritize things because unexpected events do happen, as we all know now. Probably the most important thing I learned in those 30 years of teaching was that everyone who comes to the table does have a voice and they truly deserve to be listened to. I also would like people to know that I'm a longtime Ashland resident. I chose to move to Ashland because I thought it was important to live in the community where I work. I wanted to have an understanding of the students that I was teaching and their families. I'm a recent breast cancer survivor, and I share that only because I do understand how difficult it is to work full-time and to try and juggle a family and be concerned about getting quality care. I am retired. I do work at the Ashland Theater and for a group called Great Love, which finds homes for great hounds of dogs that are no longer athletes. And finally, I'm running for a seat on the town council because as a resident of Ashland, I have benefited from the traditions of a wise and responsible leadership, and I would like to continue to be a part of that tradition. Thank you, Dr. Bell.
Ready to go? All right, let me, let me start first by saying thank you to Dr. Lauren Bell and the League of Women Voters for organizing this, even with everything that's going on. They didn't have to, so I'm very grateful. This election is supremely unique, from the global pandemic to the fact that we have an incredible six people running for three seats on our town council. So let me try and make things a little bit easier for our voters by clearly articulating what it is that separates me from the crowd and why you should consider honoring me with your vote. I believe that the town of Ashland is full of incredible potential, and we're not really meeting that potential fully politically or economically. I think Ashland has the potential to set trends and lead initiatives and discussions in, you know, the county of Hanover that we're in. I think that we're proud to be the center of the universe. We're proud to be the center of economics and culture within Hanover, but, you know, what do we really do with that status? As I said, I think we can lead those initiatives and we really should. I understand that there's a lot of concern about taking bold political stances due to how that might affect us economically. And, you know, I understand that fully, but I think government is there for more than just economic ambitions. And so I'd like to do what I can to improve the lives of our residents in a variety of ways. In office, I'm going to increasingly greatly increase my efforts in encouraging the community to engage in local politics, in particular low-income communities and youth. I think that the ball is in the court of leaders or we who would lead to reach out and engage these communities and let them know that their vote matters. I desire to further encourage art and culture within Hanover, or sorry, within Ashland by subsidizing small businesses that organize events and projects that are of a cultural and artistic nature. I think this would boost tourism, boost the economy, and bring our community together all around. The big one that many people might have heard of is education. I'm really big on seeing some kind of reform in education. I believe that Ashland can and must take the lead on this, take the initiative, and raise its voice to organize and vocalize support for K-12 education because we haven't made any meaningful headway in that in decades. And if we don't do something, chances are federal government will take the wheel. And generally, historically, that has not been favorable for education. Lastly, I'd like to see the establishment of a shelter for individuals and families fleeing domestic abuse and human trafficking. Short Pump is one of the largest hotbeds for human trafficking on the entire East Coast, and I think that we might as well use our position and what we have with a strong economy to give back. I mean, obviously, now with the pandemic, the primary concern should be re-establishing a strong economy and stable. But when all of this resolves in a few months, or however long it's going to take, I think new vision and fresh perspective will be very helpful.
All right, thank you, DA. I'll go ahead and mute you, and we'll turn now to Stephanie for three minutes of opening remarks. You're unmuted.
Hi, guys. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bell, and thank you, everyone, for tuning in. I know this is a crazy time, and I wish we were all out there together. My name is Stephanie Hare. I moved to Ashland about 20 years ago. I love this town. I work at a small printing company in the Hanover Air Park. I have a daughter who is a rising fifth grader at Gandy, who we are trying to homeschool now, and that's been quite fun. I'm married, and I'm very proud to call Ashland home. Unlike some of the others who have spoken before me, I did not come in this with a big agenda. I'm going to be honest with you. I'm more, I have recorded the meetings for the past five years, the town meetings, and that sort of put me in a love for the political aspect, so to speak. And I really just wanted to more be involved in something that I thought was doing, doing good. I, what really put a spark in me was the Citizen Leadership Academy, which I really highly recommend for people. And quite honestly, I thought a lot different on some things before I took that class and graduated. I probably even, I'm ashamed to admit, I probably sometimes rolled my eyes at things like government, and it really opened my eyes at what government can do for people. It is not, government is not a building. It's us, you guys. It's, it's us, the six of these people who are trying to run. It's good people who want to see good things done for their town. That's what I want to be a part of. Another part of it, I would like to, I also feel that better representation matters. I am from the South Taylor Street and New Street neighborhood, and I feel that better representation at something, at our local government truly, truly matters. When you have a voice at the table from all different walks of life, that's what really comes together and gets stuff done. There's great people doing great things, but when you have different ideas coming together, that's what really gets stuff done, not just one point of view, so to speak. So that's, that's where I stand. I don't think you necessarily always need a political background, so to speak, to want and have a love for public service. I fell in love with the public service. I want my, I love my town, and I just want to work really hard for it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. I'm going to go ahead and mute you again and turn now to Kathy. And Kathy, you see her? Does not, there we go. You are unmuted.
I would also like to thank you, doctor, for putting this together in these very strange times, but I'm glad for the opportunity. I, I've been in Ashland since 2003, so about 17 years. Moved here with my husband and three kids. I also now have a bonus daughter the last few years. I'm rounding out my first term on town council, and it's been a remarkable experience and something that I really, really have enjoyed. You know, serving this town and this community is probably the most rewarding thing that I've ever done, and I certainly would love to continue. I'm currently serving on the Ashland Theater Foundation Board, the Richmond Regional Tourism Board. Previously have served on the Ashland Main Street Association, which is now known as the Downtown Ashland Association. I also graduated from the Citizens Leadership Academy, and I have to agree with Steph 100%. It is the most rewarding thing you can do when you want to serve this town. Having that grounding in, you know, how our local government works and what they actually do behind the scenes is such an eye-opener and gives you such a deep, deep appreciation for the incredible staff that we have. And, you know, we would not be the strong council that we are if we didn't have this incredible staff. And, you know, I can't sing the praises of our town manager Josh Farah enough, or assistant Matt Rinal. They are just extraordinary. And we're very lucky as a community to have them, particularly during these very challenging times. I've always been incredibly active in this community because I just adore this town. You know, I've been involved with Hanover Arts and Activity Center, the Ashland Museum, Ashland Train Day, Market Ashland Partnership, and probably a good 10 years on the PTA. So I think that my devotion to this town really shows, and, you know, my commitments and, you know, and my experiences, which I think are valuable, you know, trying to move, you know, move Ashland forward with what, you know, are okay, with what our, you know, current town council and previous town councils have really done a remarkable job to set in motion. Ashland has a huge and bright future, and, you know, I want to continue to, you know, to push forward all the wonderful things that we've been planning and, you know, this bump aside, I think we're going to come out of, come out of it the other end just as strong as, you know, we looked, you know, three weeks ago. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll put Kathy back on mute, and we're going to turn now to opening remarks from David. And David, I have unmuted you, so you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I did want to thank everyone who helped make this possible because I know it took a gargantuan effort to get it done. I would have to say to start out with that I'm by far and away the most new person who's running for town council here. Actually, Steve Trevette actually convinced me to try and run back in Halloween, and hopefully it's a treat and not a trick. To tell people a little about my background, I've been a professor, I've been a business owner, I've been many, many things. And really, I've lived in virtually every area of the country. And so moving to Ashland, I really love the area, and I think that Ashland has a lot of very unique things about it that make it a great place to live. You'll often see me, you used to see me walking or biking to the Y and the library and to the Art Center because I did these virtually every day. Now I, you see me walking or biking on the trails virtually every day. I have never run for public office, and, but since I started this effort, I've learned a lot. I've spoken to literally thousands of people, and I've noticed there's a couple of common desires amongst our constituents. The big thing that people want is walkability and the small-town feel that we have here in Ashland. I have been a volunteer in many charitable organizations in the past and on a few boards. I think that my working with more contentious boards than this one will make, will give me a lot of a lot of grounding to help make this as successful as possible. People generally consider me to be extremely bright and imaginative, and I'm pretty hardworking. So the main reason why I'm running for this is I'd like to bring a lot of new ideas to town council, and I would like to bring a lot of the good things that I've seen in other areas of the country to Ashland. I don't think we need to change much, but I think that we could do a lot of things better. Like one of my fellows said earlier, I live east of the center of downtown, and so I think that we need more representation and more diversity in, in our constituents, and we need better dialogue with people to get them represented in government. You know, we have some obvious issues in trying to reduce the vacancy rate among commercial properties because we need to revitalize parts of Ashland, and there are some basic things that I think that we need to do better. You know, when I've been walking and biking every day, there are, there are signs for things that you go down and go down and go down, and you never find them. So I'm hoping that you let me serve you, Ashland, so that we can make things work better and we can make this the best town that it can possibly be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And then, of course, last but not least, Steve, you are unmuted, and you have up to three minutes.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Bell. And I thank my, my candidates joining me in this effort. I think it's wonderful that the town does have a wide array of choices. That means our democracy is working as it should. Thank town staff for backing up this effort. And I have to say, yeah, this is a unique, I imagine it's the first time we've ever had a candidate form this way. So I'll thank the citizens that are looking in, Ashland citizens, our wonderful business people in the town, and anybody else who loves Ashland. All right. Again, my name is Steve Trevette, and I currently have the honor of serving as mayor in the town of Ashland. It's not something I ever imagined would happen, but I'm honored to find myself in this role. I first ran for council in 2000 and lost. And having lost, now I wanted to continue in my effort at that time to serve the community. And so predating the, the town's version, I attended what was the Hanover County Citizen Planning Academy. I decided, well, let me learn a little bit more. So I completed that and then got on the town's Board of Zoning Appeals, served on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and from there went to the Planning Commission for the town of Ashland, served a term on there, then went to Hanover County as the Ashland District Rep for Hanover County Planning Commission, and then decided I would run for council again, and I did that and won in 2012. And so I'm getting toward the end of my second term on council. It's been an enjoyable ride, I will say. You know, I've been here through some really good times and now here in some challenging times. And honestly, I was leaning toward not running again. I was thinking, well, maybe, maybe I need to step aside and let somebody else have a chance. But it was, what I would say is the kind words and sincere encouragement from my peers on council that made me decide, yes, I do want to do this again. I felt if I'm, if I'm doing a good enough job, that they are encouraging me to continue, then I want to continue to try. And though I'm the mayor, you know, I started out as a carpenter, worked 30 years in construction, went to Human Services for Hanover County Community Services, working with adults with intellectual disabilities, and now I work in Churchill, teaching young people woodworking, carpentry, and entrepreneurial skills. So I'm used to looking at people eye to eye, you know, mayor or not, I don't look down at anybody. I walk and I listen and try to hear and see everyone as being just like me, and as David said, you know, I didn't know him from Adam. We had a struggle of a conversation. I encouraged him, man, if you want to, run for council. But I told elementary school children and others the same thing. It's a wonderful thing to serve. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'll wait my turn.
Great. All right. Thank you all very much for those opening remarks. I'm pleased to say that I've received several questions that have come in by email. So I'll go ahead and get started with the questions from town residents. Just as a reminder, the, your time limit for responding to questions is up to two minutes. I will have trouble timing that and giving you time signals, so I'll do my best, but again, just if everyone can bear with me and try to keep your responses short and responsive to the question, that would be great. I think what, what we'll do is I just am looking at the order of people on my screen, and so for the first question, I'll start with David. For the second question, I'll start with Anita. Third question, Kathy, and just kind of do that in that way so that each person gets to kind of in series be the first one to answer questions, if that is okay with everybody. So the first question comes from a resident of the town who would like everybody to comment briefly on what experience do you have with budgets, given the likelihood that we are going to be facing some kind of recession as a result of the pandemic? And as I said, I'm going to go ahead and start with David. You have up to two minutes to answer the question.
Sure. So, thank you very much. So I've owned my own business, and I've also been a professor. In both of those capacities, I had to manage budgets. And in the first capacity, well, in both of those had to manage budgets and people. I think that what's important and the critical aspect of that question is what do you do with shortfalls? And how do you overcome the shortfalls? And we, given that, I don't know if we have a rainy day fund with the city, we may need to do some sort of corporate event to try and balance the budget. But I think that, you know, the first place to look for is the discretionary funds and how to use the discretionary funds in order to better meet our essential services. But again, I've done budgeting both at a corporate level and at a, for other people's corporations, and of course, as well as my own in order to determine how to best make ends meet and to also utilize other devices to try and bring in monies for when we need to address shortfalls. Thank you.
Great. Well, within the time limit, I did want to let you know, David, that I at least have lost the ability to see your image. So I don't know whether that's happened with others as well. They're nodding. Oh, you're back. Okay. So just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, but you are back, so everything is good. All right. But now you all have moved around on my screen. So Anita, you were, were next. So go ahead and unmute you. Can you comment on your experience with budgets in light of the likelihood of a recession?
All right. Thank you. I've had quite a lot of experience working with budgets of various sizes. As a department chairperson, as a head librarian, as the international backglow coordinator at Patrick Henry, I had budgets anywhere from a few thousand dollars up to over $75,000 a year. That budget had to be distributed equally. I again had to put together a game plan of how I was going to spend that money. I had to put together how we would be able to rearrange that fund if something happened that was unforeseen, such as a situation like we're under right now. So I feel very comfortable working with money and sitting down at the table and putting together a budget for a short-term plan and also a long-term plan.
Great. Right. Let's see. Kathy, I'm unmuted. There we go. All right. Kathy, no, you're still muted. There we go. Okay. Yeah, so experience with budgets.
Well, I am now in my fourth budget cycle with the town of Ashland, so I'm a little familiar with our town budget. But what I would again reiterate is that, you know, we are so blessed with a staff and a town manager whose entire background is in finance that he has done an extraordinary job to, to put us in a position to, to roll with whatever comes our way. You know, our budgets are always, you know, fiscally responsible because of him. And, you know, and even with this curveball, you know, you know, our many, many discussions, you know, with council and Mr. Farah, you know, we're okay this year, and, you know, we're going to be able to weather the storm. So I'm blessed that, you know, that it's, it's not my decision to move pieces here to here. It's just to, you know, as a council, to agree with them. And I feel like not just in this particular, you know, moment in time, but throughout, you know, you know, the history in the last, you know, decade, Ashland has put itself into a beautiful position. You know, we have a rainy day fund. We're, we're in good shape, and I'm incredibly optimistic that we can continue to kind of roll with whatever gets thrown our way.
Great. Thank you. All right. DA, I am unmuting you. You have up to two minutes. Your experience with budgets in light of the potential of a recession.
All righty. Well, I think Kathy really hit it on the head. At 23, to be perfectly honest, I don't have an enormous amount of experience balancing budgets. I've certainly never did it for, you know, any large company, anything like that, mostly just personal balancing. But, you know, as Kathy said, we are fortunate to have a fantastic town manager, and I think that he's done a great job with it. And chances are, when I'm in there, I'll be listening to what he has to say very intently and take it from there. That's it.
Great. Thank you. All right, Stephanie. All right, you are unmuted. Experience with budgets.
Thank you. I, I have to agree with Mr. Wooten on this one. I don't have that much experience with a budget of this size. Just budgeting my Um, just budgeting my own home thing, um, I did. I, I love the Financial Peace University of Dave Ramsey, I do, uh, I preach about him. So on that aspect, no, I haven't budgeted for anything like this. Um, I do, I do, um, I co-found a nonprofit right here, um, Friends for Awareness. So we have a small budget, but once again, that's nothing compared to anything like this. So I work with numbers and, and do my responsibility and due diligence to make sure that things are done the right way on this sort of scale, no. But like Kathy and Mr. Wooten also said, um, I have extreme confidence in our town manager. It's, I love our council one town manager. It's one of the reasons, another reason why I'd love to run is to work with these wonderful people. And more so just to say that that's one of the things I like to bring to the table. Even, I'm not even, you know, elected or anything like that, but I'm already trying to share certain things with my Show You Care Vote for Hair Facebook page on the small business administration and, and things that small businesses can reach out and try to get things to get help. So I would just rely on our present council and our Mr. Farah and do my best. Thank you.
Yes, it's helpful if you say, if you tell me, if you say thank you or something at the end, because then I know that I can mute you prematurely or something like that. Again, like, I don't want to be accused of electioneering or any negative sort of thing. Um, okay, uh, Steve, we'll come to you, uh, experience with budgets.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I guess started off, uh, kind of small. I was a volunteer at the Hanover County Volunteer Fire Department in Ashland and served as treasurer of the fire department for a couple of years. When I went to the county, I first served as the, uh, as a member of the Hanover County Community Services Ward, who was elected as chair for two terms. And, and doing that, we had, uh, several million dollar budget that we had to weigh the, the pros and the cons for the, hopefully for the best bang for the buck for the lives of people and, and vulnerable people in our county. Uh, from there, you know, like I said in my work, I teach young people really basic budgets about building, uh, doing projects and considering profit, cost, all of those things. And then, uh, back to what Kathy was saying, you know, I'm in my eighth year with the, with the town's budget. I agree, we've had great staff, we've had great councils, uh, we do have a reserve fund, and everyone ought to have a reserve fund, but it, you almost need to pretend, pretend you don't have it so you don't use it until you absolutely need to use it. But, uh, I feel confident that, uh, with having budget experience, it's not just about the money, you know? And so whether you're expressing, it's not really about the money as much as it's about the goals. Uh, the goals and responsibilities that you need to take care of with a budget because you want to match the money to meet the goals.
Thank you.
Great, great, thank you. All right, so we'll turn now to, um, the second question that I received. Um, and actually, I received sort of two different versions of this question. So I'll go ahead and reread one, but I'll, I might expand a little to include some of the information from the second version. Um, "Ashland is a town with many citizens living close to or below the poverty level, yet there is a real lack of affordable housing in our community. What might you do to increase the amount of affordable housing available to citizens of our town?" And the second person who wrote in with a similar question, um, I think would extend that beyond housing. So, um, if you want to talk specifically about housing or more broadly about ways that you envision serving, um, the underprivileged and underserved in the Ashland community, um, that would be appropriate for you to do so. Um, we're going to start with Anita, um, so I will unmute you and you have up to two minutes to respond on the question of serving Ashland's underprivileged.
Thank you, um, so this is a question that I think we could spend far more than just two minutes discussing. Um, but I am well aware that we do have many citizens in Ashland that are, um, in need of affordable housing and also, um, that are, um, what we call underserved. And, um, for me, um, I want to protect what Ashland is about. I realize that we have some very diverse, wonderful communities that have, um, rich, wonderful histories, and I would like to protect that. But at the same time, I do understand that all around us, um, in around the seven miles that makes up our little town, there is a lot of growth and a lot of change taking place. So I think it's going to be really important for us to maintain partnerships, um, with our, with Randolph Makin, with our, um, businesses that are here, with, uh, different council members, et cetera, um, to try and come up with a plan of action that fits all of us. Um, I don't really have just one straight answer for that, um, because I, um, I know that we need to be financially responsible. I know that we need to try and open up the doors for people. Um, but I think the biggest thing for us to just try and maintain and working partnerships with what we have right now, um, to try and help the folks that, that are in our community. Another thing I am really concerned with, of course, is what's happening right now with, uh, uh, things that would be available for, for especially students, little, little people and seniors as, um, we start to go into summer. And I know that we have some wonderful organizations that have been working on that. So, um, I do look forward to supporting things like ACES, uh, many of our food banks that we have available, the schools that have pitching in. Um, so I think that those are some of the things that we can continue to do to help serve our community. Thank you.
Great, all right. Um, we'll turn now to Kathy, um, for two minutes on the question of serving Ashland's underprivileged. You should be good.
Uh, well, what, what's interesting about Ashland is actually we have more affordable housing than any, anywhere else in the county. Um, but yet we still have the need. And what makes Ashland unique and able to sustain, you know, some of our, our less served and underprivileged houses, households is that, you know, we, we are walkable, um, you know, there, there is affordable housing. Uh, we have social services, uh, in Ashland. So Ashland is, you know, is very attractive, and, and I think we do a terrific job trying to maintain and serve, you know, serve that, that part of our population. Um, but yet we still have a need. Um, and so what we've been looking at, you know, recently actually, uh, is a neighborhood revitalization program, uh, where we're also looking at, you know, identifying the pieces of property within the town of Ashland that we can, uh, create some infill projects. Uh, we are working with the, the Maggie Walker Community Land Trust, um, Foundation to figure out that partnership and what we can do to, to provide more housing in particular, um, you know, to, to this population. So we're definitely moving in that direction. At, as always, you know, there's more to be done and, you know, we, we need to make sure that we are taking care of all, all, all of our communities within Ashland. Absolutely, thank you.
All right, um, let's see. DA, I'm coming over to you. You're unmuted for up to two minutes on serving the town's underprivileged.
All righty, well, obviously, I'm very passionate about serving the underprivileged. One of the major things on my platform, one of the main reasons that I wanted to run, was to encourage greater participation from this community. But seeing as the question was specifically about housing, I never encountered this question as I was door knocking, so I hadn't really thought about it very long. So, um, I'm a very adaptable guy, though. And I'm confident by sitting down with the other exceptional members of the council and our town manager, we can work something out. But perhaps we could look into putting a cap on how much money could be asked for individuals under the poverty line? Any number of things. But to be perfectly honest, for that specific question, that's really the best I have.
Okay, the second part of that question, or the second person who asked, talked about serving, um, the underprivileged more generally. I don't know if you want to, you still have about a minute if you wanted to respond to that?
Yeah, that's perfect. I think a large part of how we can serve the underprivileged is by having them have more of a voice in our politics. Because, you know, who better to know the issues of this community than the community itself? So where that's concerned, I think just reaching out, engaging these communities and getting them involved will probably be the biggest thing that we can do, as well as more food banks, more food drives, bringing the community together to help each other out and lean on each other. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Stephanie, you're unmuted for up to two minutes about serving the underprivileged in Ashland.
Well, I'm going to echo Ms. Anita on the one that we could unfortunately talk about the affordable housing for quite some time. Um, just recording the meetings, like I've said, part-time. I've, I've really heard them talk about and really try to get this one taken ca- under control, but it's, it's, it's such an, a broad thing to, to try to tackle. Um, I know that I do, um, I've sat on some of the focus groups for the regional housing, um, affordable housing, and I, I just, I do my best with things like that to try to get myself involved and just be another voice at the table. I grew up in East Holland Park in Richmond, Virginia. So I come from, um, very middle-class background, and I know how important affordable housing is. And so I would just work hard with our leaders, um, on the underprivileged aspect, so to speak. I sit with, I, um, I'm on the Hanover Food Network, um, and they do meetings once a month. And I, I love, uh, Ms. Lisa Atkins with Hanover Social Services. So I've, I've dealt, I've talked with them for the past two or three years when, when we originally started our, uh, nonprofit, because we used to, um, one of our main focuses was delivering food throughout the town. Um, we've delivered hundreds of pounds of food throughout Ashland, through the Hanover Backpack Program and ACES and Hanover County, uh, the Community Services Board. So for that part, I'm, I'm, I'm very passionate about feeding valleys and making sure that the community is fed, because I think when you're fed good, then you can perform well. And affordable housing, um, I would just like to learn more and, and attend more focus groups, because that, that's a big one, that's, it's a big one to tackle. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Steve? Go ahead and unmute you for up to two minutes on, um, serving Ashland's underprivileged.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and like the others say, there's a lot to be said, uh, on this subject. Um, I'll start off and just say I've been connected with housing pretty much all my life. Uh, thirty years in residential construction and then about a dozen years in residential services, uh, managing homes for adults with intellectual disabilities. And since then, you know, involved with the town and then in my work. You know, recently, we did a house rehab, uh, in the east end of Richmond with Urban Hope, uh, one of the many organizations serving our, you know, our, our greater Richmond area. Right now, there's a Partnership for Housing Affordability. There's a, a large regional organization that's looking for answers. But on the smaller scale, and I just want to say that what I've seen in human services all my life is home is, is first. Home is, uh, fundamental. You know, all the other issues that, that people have, it's great to have a home where you can, you can calm down. You can heal from that day. You can encourage, uh, family members and be encouraged. And so getting a stable home is first. I have served as a Hanover Habitat Construction Manager for a couple of years, uh, back around 2000. And I'm currently on the board at Han- Hanover Habitat. And so, uh, you know, housing is not an easy nut to crack. I know for years, it's been mandated by the state that we have affordable housing in our comprehensive plans, but I feel for the most part, it's been getting lip service because it's, what it's going to take is the will of the people to say, "We will accept, uh, some lower, uh, cost housing in our area, in our neighborhoods." Ashland statistically, like, uh, like Kathy says, has a larger portion than anywhere else in the county of affordable homes. But we need a mix, uh, of expensive and affordable to make it work. But we do need to look for all the ways we can for affordability. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, last but not least, on this question, David, up to two minutes on serving, um, the town's underprivileged.
Sure, so I'm going to try and differentiate myself a little bit on this question from my peers. Um, first of all, when we talk about the underprivileged and the underserved, these are my neighbors. You know, when I walk, I walk by food banks basically every day. So one of the first things I'd asked the town manager about was revitali- revitalization and how to do this. So as people have pointed out, there are a number of organizations that work on this at the local level and at the state level. And I, I wanted to point out that there are a lot of federal and state programs to try and help tackle this. You know, for example, for, as a businessman, you can have your area declared an enterprise zone, which gives favorable terms for bringing in businesses in the area. I've worked for Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae, these, these large, who basically control the mortgage industry in the United States. And they, they have large programs for affordable housing, which is really what, the first part of what we're talking about here. I think that we could tap into these programs in order to improve the affordable housing in the area and that we can tap into the charitable organizations for the more general, uh, improvement of the lives of my neighbors and the people that are underserved in this population. And I don't think that this is, that this is a, a particularly tough nut or green attack, because, you know, when I've traveled, you know, I've, I've been to Alexandria Old Town, which is a beautiful area with, with very expensive housing. And they have plenty of affordable housing in Alexandria because they have zoning to approve that. And I think that one of the devices that we need to look at with the county is trying to utilize zoning to try and provide more opportunities to people in lower income to, to gain their, their foothold into housing. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, so, um, the next question that has come in, uh, while we've been meeting this evening is a question about what each candidate would do to reach out and build bridges to the African-American community in Ashland, which sometimes, uh, feels like it's been forgotten. Um, Kathy, this time we'll start with you, um, for two minutes on reaching out to the African-American community.
Uh, this is something that, uh, you know, has been on council's mind for years. Um, and there's been a lot of, you know, effort in terms of community meetings with the African-American, um, part of our, our community. Um, you know, we basically go to them, um, and say, what, what do you need? What can we do? You know, how can we, you know, get you more involved? Um, and those have been, you know, have been successful. Um, but, you know, there's still obstacles, um, in terms of, you know, why we're not, we're not, we're not coming together and remain, remain a little bit separate. Um, so I think, you, we will continue those initiatives. And, um, and I look towards things like, um, growing up black and white in Hanover County, which is our yearly, um, kind of celebrations of some of the lives, um, to, uh, have grown up in Ashland. And that is a wonderful program to bring communities together. So I would certainly love to look for other opportunities, um, that, you know, are a specific draw to, you know, to, you know, to both the African-American community and Ashland at large, and our, and, you know, our wonderful, um, Latino population. Um, that's, you know, another part of our town that we're continuing to reach out to, um, and, you know, and, and get them more involved in the town and, and the activities and what we have to offer. Uh, so there's more to be done, but, you know, we're, we're going to keep trying. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, DA, um, we'll come over to you for two minutes on, uh, building bridges to the African-American community in Ashland.
Right, I think this question more so hits really at the heart of my agenda. In particular, I believe two of the things that I would like to accomplish, uh, on the council would feed into this extremely well. For one, I think encouraging and stimulating great, greater art and culture within the community would go a long way in this. I know that small business owners have had a lot of success in organizing events that more so engaged our community as a whole. Generally, when the town puts on events, you notice that the demographic of people that are showing up is very skewed in one direction, and it's not super diverse. But small business owners have historically had a fairly good deal of success bringing those individuals into the fold and, you know, engaging them. So I think that we can leave the art to the artists there where that's concerned and just support them. As well, I think the African-American community and minority communities in general are just kind of tired to some degree of government and in many ways have lost faith. A lot of times, these communities will vote and vote and vote, and it doesn't seem like they're going to get, you know, what they're voting for or much more representation. And I think local government demonstrating what it can do and what it's capable of would go a long way in engaging these communities. And that brings to me back to another thing on my platform, organizing and vocalizing support for K through twelve educational form. I think that if we actually manage to get that done in Hanover County, that would send a very strong message to all communities that we should pay attention more to local politics. to all communities that we should pay attention more to local politics and engage more because your vote matters. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, Stephanie, um, you are now unmuted to speak on building bridges to the African community for up to two minutes.
Thank you. Well, uh, building bridges, I, I would first, I would talk to my neighbors. I would just get out there, just like how we did to collect our signatures. And I would get out there and talk to my community and go door-to-door and talk to my neighbors. I guess I would want to find out, what do we mean by, why are the bridges down in the first place? Um, I guess I want to get to the core of why maybe the African-American community feels not a part of, of the town or, or what's going on. And that's just getting out there and talking to your neighbors. That's getting out there and talking to people. And, and that's what I would do. Um, other than that, I really don't, I don't know, I would want to know how people feel. Um, like Kathy said, there's community engagement meetings. Um, so I, I'm present at them. We were at the Berkeley Town one for the Neighborhood Investment Program. And I know that people are involved and want to, and want to see their communities and their towns represented well. So, thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right, um, Steve. You are now recognized for up to two minutes on the issue of reaching out to Ashland's African-American community.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, again, you know, I, I give a whole lot of history. You know, when I was in high school, I started on the Human Relations Committee. Um, I wanted to see better relationships between races. Uh, and, and I was in high school when we finally had desegregation take place in Hanover County. And so I, I enjoyed making friends across all lines. And I've been working on that most all of my life. Uh, that's what I'm doing in Churchill at this time, is encouraging young people um, in, I'll say, a, um, poverty, uh, damaged area and trying to encourage people eye-to-eye about, you know, you can, you can accomplish these things. This is how you do it. Um, in working with Habitat, you know, we've worked, uh, built a number of homes there, Taylor Street, Randolph Street, uh, connecting with, uh, what I would say is Ms. Yvonne Walker's neighborhood. If you want to talk to someone who, who represents her neighborhood well. Um, and in doing that, I didn't work for people, I worked with people. And I think that's the point in race relations. You do things equally. You do things side by side. Uh, government leadership, you don't go to people and say, "What can I do for you?" It's, "What can I do with you?" It's more respect. And then the same thing with, uh, with Terry Abree. Uh, she was, I think, our last African-American council member. She and I ran together, uh, when I was first elected. And I told her, "Terry, if you win and I lose, I'm fine with that." She said, "Steve, if you win and I lose, I'm fine with that." And so we built a bridge that we haven't forgotten. Saw Terry at that recent, uh, citizens meeting that Stephanie mentioned, uh, over at Berkeley Town. When my sister got married years ago, the cake came from Lightfoot's. So, you know, you didn't have, you didn't have reasons or barriers, uh, unless you had that attitude to have a barrier. And so I'm all about, let's continue to knock these barriers down, um, one relationship at a time. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Steve. Um, David, we'll come over to you for, um, up to two minutes on engaging with Ashland's African-American community.
Sure. So I used to be a professor at a historically black college university. So this is a subject near and dear to my heart. And I've, you know, I've already been investigating this for quite some time. As I said, I've spoken to literally thousands of people and, you know, the, I have a neighbor about twenty feet away who's African-American. Um, so some of the things that I would plan to do, and I've already discussed this with the, the town manager, is he had mentioned that they try and go to communities like Sedgfield once a year and hold events there so that they can get feedback from them. And, you know, I've approached, uh, you know, the person at the YMCA who's charged with working with these communities. And we're going to go there, or I'm going to go with, with her to there, pretty much twice a month in order to get their feedback. Um, you know, another way that I, I look at addressing these kinds of things is, you know, when I go to synagogue, there's a, an African-American church that shares the parking lot. So I'm used to going to African-American churches to solicit feedback from the people there. I also grew up in areas that have lots of interfaith and intercultural festivals. And I've chatted with some people about trying to host these kinds of events where we could celebrate the diversity among our citizens and try and bring people together in celebration as well as to try and understand their goals and do a better job of serving them. You know, for example, in Petersburg, they have a lot of, uh, they have a number of festivals where they bring people from different, uh, different city and state services and different charitable services together to try and serve the, the African-American community there. You know, another thing I think we need to do a good job of is, is having more voter registration events in these areas. Because the first thing and arguably the biggest problem I saw in collecting signatures and talking to people is probably five of the three hundred signatures I got were from African-Americans. And it's just simply that so many of them feel disenfranchised. And so we need to reach out to the communities, go to places like Sedgfield with organizations like Wat-, the YMCA and other charitable organizations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're, uh, going to move next to Anita. Um, and I'll go ahead and unmute you for up to two minutes on engaging with the town's African-American community.
Thank you. Um, first, I'd like to say, I think that we are so lucky here in Ashland again to have such a strong government. Uh, because the people that are working here in the, um, town hall and on the board, council, pardon me, are extremely interested in the voices and the people in our town. Um, one of the things I noticed when I was considering running was I did attend the Neighborhood Information Meeting that was in Berkeley Town. And I was, uh, well-attended by a variety of ages and people. And they are very concerned about maintaining that history that's in that community. And one of the things that we discussed was creating a historical district so that not only can we preserve that area, but also that we begin to learn about the history. We can, they can share the history of that area with us. And I think it's really important to continue those meetings, uh, maybe not just once a year. I'd like to see them more often because once you start putting faces and names together and you start seeing people, it does start to create, um, uh, you know, that barrier starts to fall down or the walls start to fall down, however you want to say it. And you, um, start to see people in the streets and you feel more comfortable saying hello to them or talking to them or feeling, um, that you can be more of a part of any community. And finally, because I have that education background, I, I will look for educational opportunities. You know, we have wonderful programs at our local high schools and here in Randolph. Making we have, um, you know, um, an educational program. Isn't there something that perhaps we can do to help with tutoring programs? So to, to help establish, you know, something with SAT, uh, help, helpful programs for kids. Um, because if we start to create relationships at a younger level, they just continue to grow as people get older. So that's where, where I would probably like to go in that direction with that question. Um, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. I'll move on to our next question. Um, DA, you'll start this round. Um, the question is, "What are your plans to incentivize restaurants and small walk-in business owners to establish businesses in Ashland's downtown area?" Uh, DA, you are unmuted and recognized for up to two minutes on that question.
Well, that's a pretty complicated one. I mean, for the most part, I think that our town has taken a number of steps to drop taxes for new businesses that are there. Maybe there are more taxes that we can drop. I'm not super familiar with everything that small businesses are paying. Perhaps we could have a term length for businesses that are established for the first three years. There are certain taxes that they don't have to pay at all. But in general, I think, uh, speaking to business owners here in Ashland is really where we're going to find the best answers in regards to that. And thankfully, I've had the fortune to speak to many business owners, very good discussions. And, you know, it, it'll just take some time to really brainstorm on that. Because the matter in, in Ashland seems to be pretty complicated, right? Like there's, with the housing and everything, we have some of the most affordable housing and yet people still need us to make it more affordable. Uh, the, the issue is complicated and I think that in time, we can figure it out. And particularly just working with small business owners. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, um, Stephanie will come over to you on the same question of incentivizing, um, downtown businesses. Um, and you have up to two minutes. You're unmuted.
Thank you. Um, so fortunately, because we have such an awesome council already in place, we actually, they already do have incentives and grants in place. Um, I'm not familiar with everything and I'm kind of just reading off, uh, just doing my own research. So I don't have any new ideas as of yet. But like I said, I would just love to be a part of that and working with them. But there are incentives and grants, uh, there are special tax reliefs for the Arts and Culture District, like he was saying. Um, getting, getting rid of the B-pole tax for those guys, uh, the Technology Zone, Infrastructure Forgivable Loan. I think there are things out there, but maybe it's just more of, and like when I was collecting my signatures, I think the town sometimes feels like communication is, 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 is some loss in some parts. So maybe just, I've, I've got a voice and I'm going to use my God-given talents to get out there and speak for people and, and listen and advocate. So more of that, I would just make sure I'm engaging with the small businesses and letting them know the, the things we have in place right now to help them out. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Steve, come to you next, um, for up to two minutes on incentivizing, uh, businesses to locate in the downtown area.
Yeah, and I'll agree with Stephanie and Da-, and Daniel. Complicated question, but, uh, the town does have some incentives, um, for new businesses. There are some, some breaks, but those breaks are limited. Uh, there are some, uh, some grants that are available as well. But, you know, getting, getting in business and incentivizing a business is one thing. Uh, if you invite someone to come to Ashland and start a business, uh, you don't just say, "Well, we brought you here. Good luck." Uh, so some of the challenges is foot traffic and, and helping people stay in business. You know, we don't get to pick the businesses, you know, we don't deck out, you know, deal out cards about what's going to be where. But, um, we try to, uh, encourage a mix of businesses. And then as, I agree with Daniel, uh, talking to business owners uh, in our Downtown Ashland Association, um, talking to businesses and trying to figure out, what do you need the most? I'll steal some of Kathy's thunder, but she'll, she'll detail it, I'm sure. Um, with recent marketing and branding campaigns for the town, you know, you want to get foot traffic. You, you can't sell a thing if people don't come into your establishment. And they don't come if they're not near you or there's something attractive. So with, uh, efforts and cooperation with Downtown Ashland, with Market Ashland Partnership and the town, uh, for advertising campaigns, new marketing campaigns, uh, tourism, that has been grown quite a bit here in the past few years. And I think until this COVID-19 showed up, I think we've seen pretty good growth. And the town as well hired, uh, business retention, uh, and attraction manager, uh, not too long ago. Took that step, added that position, uh, to try to concentrate on this very thing. So, you know, first of all, nothing else, council members need to let businesses know we appreciate them and we want to support them, uh, as we're trying to do through these, these tough times. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, David will come to you for up to two minutes on this question of attracting businesses to downtown.
Sure. So a lot has been said about the incentives and grants that are in place in the Downtown Ashland Association. And there is, you know, an effort to, for example, get the, uh, the Mid-Atlantic Railroad Park here to try and bring in more tourism. But we have to keep in mind too, that downtown can only be so big and there's already a lot of businesses in there. And what, what goes away in order to, what, what has to be removed in order to put more businesses into downtown? So I think we need to look at this as, at a larger question of how to revitalize the economic capability of the town. And, and like I said, there's a lot of commercial vacancies that we need to address. Now, to try and help people that are already interested in bringing businesses into town, you know, there's some things that we can do that haven't been mentioned so far. You, you know, as I said, we could have Enterprise Zones set up, which is a federal designation in order to try and, uh, get federal money to subsidize bringing people into town as opposed to spending the town's money to bring businesses into town. You know, nothing has been said about the Small Business Administration or SCORE. Um, you know, I've ran small businesses, I've had three different small businesses. And these are the kinds of things that I've looked for when I wanted to come into, well, when I was looking for office space and a business plan and trying to talk with investors. There's all sorts of devices that these types of organizations can bring to help people do things like attract funding. It's, it's one thing to try and tell someone that Ashland is a great environment for running a business. And we've already put in place monetary devices to make it more attractive to be here. But we also need the cheaper aspect, which is the mentoring and the advice on how to run a business in the town of Ashland. And with that, they would learn, we could impart through SCORE and SBA and so forth, um, the ability to use other people's money to help our small businesses grow and the people that want to bring businesses here to help them grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll turn to Anita now on this question. Um, Anita, you have up to two minutes on the question of attracting businesses downtown.
Well, I know that this has been, um, an ongoing question for as long as I've lived in Ashland. It's not an easy balance because as just was mentioned, we're very limited in size when it comes to the downtown area. And people want a wide variety of businesses to go to. And that makes it tough when you only have so many people that will be able to, um, support small businesses. Um, I think one of the things that we can continue to do, and I heard Steve, I believe, mention it, is, uh, the foot traffic. To continue to do some of the things that we do really well, some of the activities that we have that draw in people from around our, um, outside our community to come in and take advantage of Train Day, take advantage of our farmer's market, our Christmas parade. That draws other people in that are willing to come back and have, you know, a, a beverage at one of our local establishments or, you know, buy the cookies at the, at the local business. Um, I, I will say this, I've been very encouraged over the last few weeks um, that our small business owners in our community, and I know the town council has been involved with this too and other members in the community, but have been so encouraged to see how they have worked so hard to try and keep the doors open. And, um, I really appreciate how hard everyone has worked to try and keep the businesses that we have here. Um, and in the meantime, you know, think about how we can expand that, um, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and again, last but certainly not least, we'll come to Kathy with the question of attracting, um, businesses downtown. Kathy, you have up to two minutes on that question.
Thanks. Uh, well, in addition to our incentive programs, um, we, and I think folks may actually be very surprised about this, um, you know, that our downtown businesses, you know, when we think about Ashland, we think about them. But in fact, we have over six hundred businesses in the town's footprint. And, you know, and so part of, part of that is making sure that, you know, we're, we've, we're listening to and responding to all of our Ashland businesses that contribute to our economy. Um, and, and one of the ways that we've done that is we have a wonderful business retention, retention specialist named Joe Topham, who, you know, goes out of his way to, you know, keep track of, you know, the, the businesses outside of town, you know, saying, "Who needs more space? I think we have some space here for you to move into." You know, just anything to keep them in town or to just identify properties that, you know, will, you know, that when folks are interested in Ashland, we can say, "Yes, you need to look at this. You need to look at this." Uh, and it's the same thing with our downtown businesses, except, you know, they go through the filter of the Downtown Ashland Association, who is right there on the ground with them. And, you know, the, in Downtown Ashland Association has been wonderful in terms of, you know, of really kind of being our ear for our downtown community. And I'm not saying that we don't talk to our businesses downtown either. Uh, you know, part of our, you know, our initiative is to, you know, to really keep track of the properties that are available, talk to those property owners, you know, try and get some, some movement in some of, you know, the, our underutilized spaces. Design downtown to better accommodate, um, you know, you know, small businesses. We've got our, you know, our England Street Master Plan that we're trying to, you know, to get, get rolling. Um, the other thing I want to point out is the Dominion Energy Innovation Center. And that is something that's right in the heart of our downtown where we encourage entrepreneurs to, to get together and, you know, and try and build their business with the hopes that, you know, they love Ashland so much that they stay. Um, and I, I think we're seeing some evidence of that. So, um, and then the last piece is, you know, the theater, which the town owns, has been wonderful in terms of bringing that kind of foot traffic in. And, you know, and, and the more of that we can do to bring in regional players, um, and visitors, it would be great.
Great. Thank you. All right, so we have only about three minutes left, two minutes left, um, and some questions. that as this has been going on, I've tried to convert into as close to yes, no, or one-word answers as we can. So I'm gonna follow the lead of a colleague of mine, Professor Sarah Cribs, who as moderator of an event on campus, decided to turn to a lightning round. We're gonna do the same thing, we're gonna go to the lightning round. At great risk, I'm gonna unmute all the candidates for this, so use your power for good, not for evil, people. And what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna start with Stephanie, and I'm just gonna ask a series of questions. Keep your answers quick and snappy. Some of these are more substantive and serious than others. But we'll start with Stephanie, we'll go quickly through everybody, finish with DA, and then start the next question with Steve. So everybody, starting with Stephanie, how long have you lived in Ashland?
Twenty years.
Steve?
Thirty-five.
David?
A year.
Anita?
Since 1998.
Okay.
So twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years, yeah. Kathy?
Seventeen.
Okay, and DA?
Sixth grade, so maybe thirteen.
Thirteen years, okay. And I had a little trouble hearing you there, DA, so you might want to...
Oh, I'm sorry, since sixth grade.
Okay, all right, very good. What is your favorite spot in Ashland, starting with you, Steve?
Yeah, and it would surprise me, there's too many.
Quickly, quickly, all right, all right, very good. Say that again, because I was talking.
Hanging out with Bill E. Wald at Bell Book and Candle.
All right, very good, David.
The library.
Hey, Anita? The theater. Great, Kathy?
You stole mine, so hanging out with rail fans at the Ashland Visitor Center.
Great, DA?
Also wanted to say the theater, but I'll just say, anywhere along the railroad is beautiful.
Okay, Stephanie?
Caboose.
Caboose, very good, all right. Here's a serious question that lends itself to this format. So what is the best approach in a recession, austerity or government investment? David?
Government investment.
Anita?
I'll say government investment.
Okay, Kathy?
I think we need a little austerity.
All right, DA?
Government investment.
Stephanie?
Government investment.
Steve?
I'll round it out with austerity.
All right, all right, and then we'll end with a lighthearted, and so we'll start with Anita on this, Ashland Train Day or Light Up the Tracks?
Light Up the Tracks.
Kathy?
Train Day.
DA? Okay, speak up.
Light up the tracks.
Great, Stephanie?
Light up the tracks.
Steve?
Train Day.
Train Day. And finally, David?
Light up the tracks.
All right, very good. So that concludes virtually all of the questions. There were a couple we didn't get to, so hopefully we'll be able to figure out a way to make, you all will be available. I know that the town is hoping to do some more to help promote your candidacies in the upcoming elections, so there will hopefully be additional opportunities for the last couple of questions that we didn't get to. But we did manage to get through multiple questions tonight, so I really appreciate everybody sticking very closely to the time limits. At this point, we're gonna move now to closing statements. I have returned your names to my special magic name-drying cup. So I'm gonna go ahead and draw names for the order of closing statements. Anita, you are yet again first. DA, you'll go second. Stephanie, you'll go third. Kathy, fourth, I think you might have been fourth last time. David, you'll go fifth, and Steve, you'll go at the end. As a reminder, each candidate has up to two minutes to make their closing remarks. And so, as I said, we'll go ahead and start with Anita, you have up to two minutes for your closing remarks.
All right. Once again, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Bell, the League of Women Voters, and everyone at Town Hall for making this event possible. I want the citizens of Ashland to know that I'm interested in protecting what makes Ashland a special place to live. Ashland's a combination of unique neighborhoods, and each of them have their own history, and it's something that I'd like to protect. There's no doubt that all around us, all around our little community, change is taking place, and I want to make sure that we keep Ashland the main focus. I think it's important that we protect that. Ashland is fortunate enough to have a very strong government, and I'm interested in serving in that town government because they truly do want to know what people in the community think and feel, and I think it's important that we protect that. We are very fortunate that Ashland provides outstanding services. We have dedicated people that are here to enhance our community and take care of our citizens, and I think it's important that we protect that. And I would like a seat on the Ashland Town Council because I plan to work for you to preserve Ashland's unique qualities and to meet some of the challenges that we now face. I'd like to end by wishing all the other candidates the best of luck in this campaign, and I would encourage each of the voters in Ashland to please use your right to vote and whenever that might be, and I ask you for your support in this election. And finally, and the most important thing, is I hope that you and your families are safe and that you'll continue to be so and that you'll stay healthy. Thank you very much, I appreciate your contact.
Great, thank you, Anita. All right, we'll turn now to DA for closing remarks, up to two minutes. You are unmuted, DA.
All righty. Well, I just want to say that I didn't choose to run for this office out of, you know, any upset that I feel about the current town council or anything like that. More than anything, I'm just eager to do my part to participate and improve the community however I can with, working with any of the incredible people that we have here. And yeah, I'm just gonna keep pushing those same major things that I think are super important, community involvement, pursuing greater arts and culture, engaging in talks for K through 12 education reform, and establishing some shelter. And I hope everybody stays safe and well through all of this, and thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we'll turn now to Stephanie for up to two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Bell, and everybody who made this possible. Thank you, Ashland, for tuning in. I really appreciate y'all's support just up until this, for helping me even get on the ballot, truly. I really appreciate it. It's been a fun time and eye-opening and a learning experience. I just appreciate everybody's vote. I would love to work hard for my town. I would just like to read that I care about Ashland and the citizens who live here. I think that open communication and respect for others are vital aspects when working in public service, and that's things that I truly stand for. And so I also hope that everyone stays safe and well, and please, please, use your voice to vote. So many people work so hard so that we could vote, you guys. Go out there and make it happen. Thank you so much. Show you care, vote for hair. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Stephanie. All right, we'll turn now to Kathy, and you are now recognized for up to two minutes for closing remarks.
Thanks. Well, I think for anyone who knows me knows how very passionate I am and have always been about Ashland and, you know, and I want to keep my job, I love what I do, and I want to keep serving, you know, the people of Ashland. We have a wonderful community that needs to be preserved and nurtured, and I'd like to be a part of that again. I would like to take a little bit of time to reassure everyone that, you know, a lot of our focus in the last few weeks have been planning, you know, for this unexpected turn of events, you know, and putting things in motion to make sure that everyone is safe. And, you know, and we are very concerned about our small businesses, and, you know, I know Steve has already started working with Joe Topham and reaching out to everyone, and we just want to know that, we want to hear from you. You know, we're doing what we can, you know, in terms of advertising, you know, to help our community, but we want to hear from you. You know, let us know, you know, what you need and what you're experiencing. And that goes not just for businesses, but for residents. You know, we want to know how this is impacting you and what we can do to help. And then when we're on the other side of this, you know, I'm excited about continuing a lot of the momentum that, you know, we had going, and, you know, and I hope, you know, that we can get back to that, you know, sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great. David will come to you for up to two minutes of closing remarks.
Well, again, I wanted to thank you for hosting us, all the people that were involved in getting this done. It's been a privilege to run for town council, and I wanted to also encourage people to, you know, check out the Facebook page that I have, the links to the absentee ballot application. Because if this virus continues in the way it is, we're gonna need to be doing absentee ballots in order to ensure that everyone gets their voice heard. And it is important, as people have mentioned, to preserve the walkability in a small town of the field. But I think that my comment and what I want to leave people with is that when we have this forum, I think people are relying too much on the notion that we have a great infrastructure in place and a great town manager and so forth, and that the problems are gonna take care of themselves. Because you mentioned that there are a number of, people ask questions about tough problems. And, you know, I've been a small business owner, I've been very active in the African-American community, I'm very active with the underrepresented populations. So I chose to run because I love what I see here, and it's important to have new ideas in order to tackle the tough problems, because the easy problems are easy to solve. And we don't, we need talent to solve the toughest problems. So I hope that everyone stays safe and well during this crisis and that you let me help, let me serve you, because I think this is a great place and I'd like to make it an even better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And last but not least, Steve, you have up to two minutes for some closing remarks.
All right, thank you. In my opening statements, I talked about my experience, but I do acknowledge that everybody has life experiences, no matter what age, and you draw from those life experiences. So absolutely no critique to any newcomers. I welcome the new candidates and wish everyone well and thank them for the willingness to serve. I want to add some context about experience, though. I'll just say regardless of how much I've been involved with planning, zoning, budget, you know, all of that, this world keeps me humble. And I have no delusion that somehow I always know what's best because of experience. If anybody tells you that, watch out. To serve best, I draw on my experience, but only to formulate questions. Because if you ask the right questions, that's how you can, it helps you make the right decisions. Then I trust in the knowledge and experience of our town staff and other trustworthy resources. And last, I listen to you, the citizens of Ashland, you know, the individual voices and the community voices. And all of those together, you listen and you try to learn, you combine that with the first two, and then you try to make your decisions. I think I may have mentioned earlier that, you know, having served on council, we don't agree 100% of the time, but we come to a consensus, but we respect each other and we listen 100% of the time. And whether I continue on council or not, that needs to continue for this town's sake. If I've gained weight because I've been trying to eat my way through Ashland with takeout, supporting our local businesses, so I just encourage everybody, you support your local businesses, whatever it is that's active, try to, and if you haven't made your Christmas list, make it with a mind to purchase all the things you know are here in different businesses in Ashland. So we need to stay humble, I want to stay doing my homework, I want to stay listening, that's how I serve Ashland. I want to thank everybody involved in the production of this forum. My hope is we continue to look out for each other, that we look out for local businesses, we support our neighbors as we can, and we stay involved in the challenges and celebrations of our fair town. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have reached the end of our time. I want to add my thanks to all of the candidates who joined us. This was not the circumstance that we would have all wanted to find ourselves in, certainly not for our town, for our state, for our country, or our world. But I really appreciate the candidates' flexibility and willingness to still give this time, even as everybody is managing lots of difficult circumstances. I want to remind everybody that the absentee ballot, or the deadline to request an absentee ballot is April the 28th. You can do that on the State Board of Elections website. In addition, at least for the moment, the election is scheduled for May the 5th, although we know that the governor has called for the General Assembly to evaluate that, so we will all keep an eye on that. But I want to add my encouragement to everybody watching and to those who will watch at a later time, to exercise your right to vote, to stay engaged in the community, it's very important. And regardless of who you're voting for, to show support and appreciation for all of these candidates for being willing to put themselves out there and offer themselves for public service. With that, I am going to close tonight's meeting. In just a moment, I'll end the meeting for everybody involved, so everyone will disappear. My thanks to the town and to the League of Women Voters. My thanks again to the candidates and to everybody who tuned in to watch live and who will watch in the future. Stay healthy and well, and we will see you next time, hopefully in person. Take care, everybody, good night.